Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome. We'll start off, we have a couple presentations today. First of all, we have Caitlin Graves with five years of faithful service. I appreciate it very much. And then our big winner for the day is Robert Deemer, 30 years of service. Robert, thank you.
I'm Sean.
Thank you, Sean, for the minutes.
I make a motion to recess the commissioners meeting in open salary board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to recess pressures of the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The salary board, all present? Excuse me. Item one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10th meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item one. The minutes of May 10th meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item two.
Make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item two, eliminate temporary part-time position Emergency Management Operations Training Officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Item three.
Make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item three on the agenda, eliminate the position of Correctional Sergeant Training Officer, May 24th, 2017. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda. Second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item four on the agenda, eliminate the position of Correctional Sergeant, effective May 24th. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item three on the agenda, eliminate the position of Correctional Sergeant Training Officer, May 24th, 2017. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda. Second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item four on the agenda, eliminate the position of Correctional Sergeant, effective May 24th. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item five on the agenda, create the position of Non-Union Full-Time Deputy Warden Operations Training. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is there salary involved in this position?
Yeah, what was?
No.
What was, where's the original?
It's between 35 and 41.
35 and 41 based on experience.
I'd like to amend my motion.
To include that?
To include range of 35 to 41.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that replacing the other position?
Yeah, basically replaces the Correctional Sergeant Training Officer.
So it's a new title, new?
Just a new title. It's got a little bit, it's got more responsibilities to it, but it gives the person more authority being a deputy warden instead of just a sergeant. And it allows us to comply with DOC.
And you don't have somebody for the position yet, or do you do?
Well, they'll post it, and, you know, they may have an internal candidate that qualifies. I don't know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item six, amend the motion to create a temporary full-time non-union position of Courthouse Security Officer, basically extending it through August 30th, 2017. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any public comment in relation to the salary board? If none?
Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait. I guess I'll make a motion to close the salary board and open the commissioners meeting. I'll say we're done.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to close the salary board and return the commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number two. Now, there is a correction on that. It's under the public comment. It says the Shager property has been sold and is no longer a part of the possible incinerator. That's not true. The Shager property is not sold. It is no longer part of the incinerated project. It is off the market.
Have you talked to the owner by any chance?
No. Okay. Would that change?
Could I just comment on the public comments about Commissioner Newman from Lancaster? I think his opening statement was that he came here to say that he cared about all counties, not just Lancaster County, was his reason, if I remember correctly. And then that was brought up later.
Says reinforce his position in growing his value of other counties and his concerns in natural gas. So that's what he said, talks to you. Anyway. Would those, that change? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve with those changes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve the minutes of the May 10th meeting with the corrections made. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item three.
Make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item three on the agenda, ratify or approve the following cash disbursements or accounting payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item four on the agenda, to ratify or approve the following seminar request on our payments for seminar requests. Questions or comments? Yes.
At the last meeting, the seminar request from the register recorder's office, I think you noted that you weren't sure if the county paid for this list report. And I guess you determined that the county does pay for that.
Well, no, the county doesn't have to, but the registering recorder is willing to use the funds allocated for the June conference to pay for that, so there's no additional cost to the county. She's reallocating only because of what's being presented here is the changes in the orphans courts and the adoptions that both of them need to be at to get those changes.
And does Francis O'Connor have to be there too, or how is he involved?
Yes, he's the attorney for the, for the registering recorder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Item five.
I make a motion to approve item number five on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, second by Christian Warren to approve item five on the agenda, ratify or approve the transfer of Peana Lavery of Scott Township from temporary part-time position to full-time position. Questions or comments?
This is with emergency management?
Yes.
Has there been any updates on the emergency management manuals, or?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six.
I make a motion to approve item number six on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, second by Christian Warren to approve item six on the agenda, ratify the resignation of your good of Matthew Walters and Mashaw. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number six on the agenda.
Seven.
Or seven, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Christian Arnold, second by Christian Warren to approve item seven on the agenda, to sign the following purchase of service agreements between Suscano County Children Youth and Vision Quest. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda with the amendment to include for the DA's office.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item eight on the agenda with purchase of 2017 utility police interceptor from New Holland Ford for the district.
And what does that police interceptor do compared to any other?
It's the brand of vehicle.
And then how much Act 13 funds are being used for it?
I would say probably around 13,000. We don't have the exact number yet. We're waiting for the insurance check. I'm the one that got it wrong.
And what would be the category you're utilizing for the public safety?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item nine to adopt law commission 2017-12 for Penelac Montrose District for employee safety milestone. Questions or comments?
And what does that mean?
They have a milestone that they've achieved for no injuries on the job and safety, so they're getting recognized for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item 10 on the agenda, through the Lackawanna, Suscano County Drug and Alcohol Program Agreements and Contracts for fiscal year 2017. Questions or comments? Yes.
Just as a point of clarification, we do not use necessarily all of these programs. These are just programs that are available for our use.
They are available, so they all get approved.
Through the joint of Lackawanna County. Do we pay just over, I think we pay $13,200 a year to receive services from these organizations that are listed?
That's in the millions. Any other questions?
You're saying that all these programs here, you got, how many are here, about 40?
You give it a pay.
About 40 programs, and you're paying only $13,200 this year to what, use these programs for individuals? What does that mean?
It's, we're in a joint with Lackawanna County, just like we are with behavioral health, intellectual disability, and early intervention. And if we, if we were on our own, we would be paying the full amount for everything, being a county of small population. Being in a joint with Lackawanna County and then having a very large population, we're able to piggyback on them. We pay $13,200 to the joint to have all of these facilities and services available to South Spokane County residents.
And basically, we're getting millions of dollars worth of services for $13,000.
I'm sorry, Tony is here.
Tony is here.
I'll thank the commissioner. Yeah, I can specifically, our total budget of the drug and alcohol office is $2.9 million. And that's what the $13,000 is coming.
And so how many people are you servicing? Would you say with that 13, what did you say, 13, how many million? 2.7 million?
2.9. Good question. It's hundreds, obviously.
Hundreds in a year?
Yeah. It's of course covering two county areas too.
And that's for drug and alcohol abuse of some kind?
It's both for treatment services and primary prevention. A lot of the work in our schools.
And then it's also court ordered probably too? These people are court ordered to take these programs, or?
Um, yeah, some of them are court ordered, yeah.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any public comment with the commissioners meeting?
I'd like to know what, what can be done with the XNG plant in Forest Lake that failed the noise ordinance? And it's still allowed to operate? And they, they're given a certain amount of time to somehow mediate that or rectify that?
Well, I believe the, we're waiting for the planning board to meet and send us a letter saying that they're out of compliance when they do that. And the commissioners will take the action they need that's appropriate, which will probably be a cease and desist.
Which means what? Do you actually?
Send them a letter, tell them they have to shut down. Will they get a fix?
Okay, because they are out of compliance at this point.
I understand.
So then you have to wait till the planning commission meets next week, next Tuesday night?
Yeah.
And then they'll send you a letter and, and then you'll order them to cease and desist?
And we'll meet with our attorney and have him fall through to take care of it.
And they'll actually do it? They'll, they'll have to do it?
I don't know that. They can do it, or they can tell us no.
Now, what happens if they say, what happens if they say no? Can, do you have any enforcement, or?
No, we have no enforcement, other than to take them to court.
Oh, you take them to court.
Right.
They also, do you know what their plan, when they originally came in? What was their plan, where the gas was going to go? Do you remember what they said?
I have no idea.
Because I remember going, and they said they were going just to customers in different states, either upstate New York. And now I'm finding out that they're also putting gas into the pipeline, the Aricoi pipeline, in Manheim, New York.
Well, it's business. They're allowed to do it while they're in compliance with state regulations on hauling and federal regulations on hauling. They can do anything they want with it.
Well, okay.
They don't need our approval as to who they're going to sell the gas to.
And are we able to get a report yet? What happened to that first accident when they rolled over a truck? Is there any way of getting, do you get a copy of the report?
No.
Or emergency management?
No, I'm sure there's an accident report with the state police. You can contact them.
So they don't just give you a report?
No.
So we'd have to contact them at this point.
Any other questions?
I'd like to ask Mary Ann, is there anything you can tell us about what's happening in the county that you've been involved in that's good for us to know, or?
If you're, visit my Facebook page. Everything I do is listed on my Facebook page.
But now, a lot of people, especially elderly people, don't have computers, they're not computer savvy. They don't go to Facebook.
And where are you going to put this?
Well, this is going on YouTube, but the thing is, if you could, if you could tell us.
Get it to their computers.
You could tell us, and then they can write it in the newspaper. Maybe a newspaper can get anything positive you can tell us, or?
There's lots of positive things going on. We're always working for the good of the people. It's always the residents first.
Well, you know, and here's where we're at. You know, this is commissioners meeting to conduct the business of the commissioners. If you want to meet with the other commissioners after and find out what they've been doing, you're more than welcome to do that. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Well, what about you? What did you do this week? Anything?
I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold. All in favor?
Uh.
We are adjourned.
We do have a.
We do now have to go to an election board.
We have an election board meeting.
Thanks, Teresa. It's always a pleasure to have you stop by. I'll have to order at 9:18 AM. All commissioners are present. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2016 election board meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Warren, second by Christian Arnold to approve item three, to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2016 election board meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number four. Okay, there's a couple issues that have come up. One is, was brought to our attention from our solicitor. This has to do with a, and I will read it from the, from the solicitor. "I received the attached information. I believe there exists sufficient probable cause that it needs to be investigated further because of 25 PS 3258. In our, in your capacity as election board, the election code pursuant to 25 PS 2642 indicates that under such circumstances, you should refer this matter to the district attorney office for the office to investigate further and make a determination as the proper course of action." What this is in relation to is apparently there was some emails, my understanding emails that were sent out in regards to the Montrose School Board election from individuals that were negative in action within the eight days prior to the election. So, and of course, that, if that is the case, and that is true, that does violate the election code. So, the recommendation is by the solicitor to have that moved to the district attorney office for investigation to see if there's any further action that needs to be taken.
I believe it was the letters also.
And I believe, and I believe that's possibly true. Attachment here is a letter also. So, with that said, I'd like a motion to, to move this to the district attorney.
Make a motion. I'll second that.
Here, we have a motion and a second to move this issue to the district attorney's office for his review and investigation, and to take whatever actions that are appropriate. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I'm not sure I understand the process. Is it the election board, I mean, we've had this come up before in the past.
Correct.
And in the past, it wasn't the election board that filed the complaint, it was actually the people that felt, that felt offended by the action. And so I guess I'm asking, is it the election board's responsibility? For example, we had a problem with signs here, was that last year, a couple years ago, people didn't put the proper wording on the bottom side. Are these all actions the election board are responsible for forwarding to the district attorney? Are these, are you just doing that because someone filed a complaint with you?
Well, they're, well, we're doing this because our solicitor filed it with us, but the election board has a responsibility and due diligence, if, due diligence, if they know that there's an issue or a concern, to address the issue or concern. Just because somebody doesn't file a complaint doesn't mean that it shouldn't be reviewed by the election board and either recommended to move forward or be taken care of. So, and the issue years before, I don't know how it happened years before, or who made what decision, but I will tell you that, you know, this comes before this election board. We, this election board is responsible, make sure that we move it to somebody else to have it investigated, see if there is an issue or not. If there's no issue, then there's no problem. If there is an issue, then it falls to the district attorney's hands anyway.
So moving forward, if there's, if we, if someone feels there's a violation of the election code, then notifying the election board would start the process of getting it reviewed?
Well, I will tell you, and I can't speak for the other two commissioners, but I will tell you, if somebody notifies me that there is a violation of the election code, then my response.
Perceived.
Perceived violation of the election code, then it's my response that it needs to be investigated.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you explain more, what is this negative, or what is the issue?
The, the election code says that within eight days of the election, you cannot put out any negative ads against an opponent. And there was a negative, apparently a negative email and a negative paper that was put out against people that were holding office that were in confidence.
Can you say the names of who was holding office?
No, I'm turning over to the district attorney, and we'll let the district attorney handle it.
So they can't say anything negative within eight days of an election?
Correct.
No ads or emails?
You cannot attack your opponent within eight days of the election.
Hmm, that's interesting, yeah.
I don't know how the president's.
They don't have it on the presidential level, it looks like.
Well, I believe they do. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that is so moved forward. And we have another issue that we have to discuss.
We have an issue that was brought to our attention of Commissioner Arnold entering the voter registration office after hours to sign the books. There's eight books in there to be signed. And why was that a problem? I was told that they needed to be signed that day, November, or May 22nd.
Well, at no time should anybody be in that office. The books are under the, under the control of the director of elections, and no time should anybody go in that office by themselves and be allowed to be with those books by themselves without anybody else in there.
Why? All I did was sign the back page where my signature, they were open to that page, and I signed where my signature was today.
I understand what you did, but the, the presence of what could have happened, even though you did nothing, the presence of what you could have done, is that you were alone in the room with those books and had those books open. Now, there's two issues. Now, one, the books should not have been allowed out, they should have been under lock and key. That issue's been addressed. Both parties are here today. Chairs are here today. The question to you is, if you're fine with it, we move forward. If you feel that we should bring back the people that did the books and have them review, then we'll do that.
I was sworn under oath, as a member of the election board, to be honest and trustworthy in assigning those books.
I am not saying you're not.
Okay.
But you put yourself in a position to come back in here at night after hours, go into that room by yourself, and open the books up.
The books were open, correct, already, Bethany?
Yes.
So the books were out.
And I, I left, the director, I had, I text Rachel and said, and she, Rachel did say maybe you shouldn't, but I wasn't here yesterday. I had taken a personal day yesterday, so I thought the clock was ticking. They said it was a matter of time and the clock was ticking, so I didn't feel that I should wait till today.
So Rachel knew you were coming here?
Rachel did not.
Okay.
I don't think so. No, no.
So chairs, do you have any?
What I'm hearing is, you know, first, I got calls on this before, is security issues. I mean, not necessarily people issues, but security issues. I mean, I can't imagine how anybody, or why anybody, can get into the courthouse. Anybody can get in the courthouse anytime they want. I mean, I don't understand that. I, I've had it business for years, you know, I didn't let my help just come in and go in place, or my managers. You know, the owner, different story, but managers do it. So I have a question about security, but I have a lot of security questions we brought up here a year ago at this meeting about, you know, the security issues, and it was highlighted this morning. Just anybody, just not anybody can go through that thing. I mean, I had to get checked like I was carrying a bomb, and yet there's people walking past not getting checked. And, you know, as a matter of fact, I made the comment, you know, who blows up the post office? It's post office workers, it's not, it's not the guy walking in to mail the letter. So I think, you know, I think we should review your security measures totally in the courthouse, why anybody could come and go and begin with, why things aren't locked, and certain people have, you know, who's got keys. Just some sound, doesn't sound quite right as far as security goes. So you wouldn't have this question. You know, does, does every commissioner have a key to everything? Can you come and go to anywhere?
No.
Then apparently got a key to this. I mean, I don't understand why things aren't locked.
Well, okay, so the answer to those questions is yes. You know, the locks will get changed on those doors, so nobody has access to them except for the director, so that that issue won't happen again. So that issue will be taken care of. As far as the security coming into the building, that's with the sheriff's department. The sheriff is responsible for the security of the courthouse. So he's the one that makes the rules as to who goes through the metal detector and who doesn't. So, but, you know, that's an issue that, again, we'll discuss with the sheriff. But the issue at hand now is, are you fine with what happened, or are you requesting, or would you prefer that the books got looked at again by the people that were here and did the books? So, but, you know, that's an issue that, again, we'll discuss with the sheriff. But the issue at hand now is, are you fine with what happened, or are you requesting, or would you prefer that the books got wiped out again by the people that were here and did the books?
I, I, I don't see it as a concern.
I don't either.
Because the election, you know, she, she wasn't there long enough, and I don't know how she could do it to begin with. I mean, we had a problem years ago, 2007, we had a problem here with security, with ballots and things, to the point where the election director was fired after that election because of the security problems you had. So, you know, maybe we should be learning from all of our mistakes we keep having here. I don't see a problem, and you don't.
I don't either. I'm sorry.
I mean, no, I don't think it changed any election.
And I was, I'm under oath as an, on the election board, and I'm under oath as a commissioner. And when I came here, I was told that our fog worked everywhere except for the court, for the judges' chambers. And we have come and gone in here. We've come in, Mary Ann's come in and signed stuff on the weekend or at night. Things have been signed on Monday morning when I got here.
That's different than the election board.
Okay, okay, well, I apologize if I did anything wrong. I thought the clock was ticking. Once Commissioner Hall had signed the books, they were dated, I keep saying November, I don't know why, May 22nd, and I was under the impression that it was like a three day beforehand, that the clock was ticking. So out of concern to make sure I did it correctly, I came in and I signed the books. I'm sorry if that's.
Going forward, I would have, you know, looking backwards, I would have said, well, maybe somebody should have met you here, said, you know, sign the books. I could see where that would probably, and we wouldn't have had any perception here, no matter what it is.
Right. And the whole point of this is to make sure everybody's aware, because I don't want it to come up six months from now as to, oh, we heard that Commissioner Arnold came in after hours and signed the books. And that's it. We don't want to have somebody come back and say, oh gee, now, now we've got issues and concerns. If both parties are fine with it, then we're done with it.
Is this the first time you're hearing about this today, this morning?
Yes, that they have a problem with this, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
It's always brought out in a meeting. I'm always side, I was going to be side the head, you know, they never talk to me at a time, we have a conversation. It's like, let's do it in the media and on camera. So that's what we do.
That's not.
Yeah, it is true.
Okay.
It is true.
Again, you play the victim all the time.
I play the victim all the time?
Right.
No, I just try to bring the truth out.
No, you don't.
Could I comment about?
Yes, she does. She brings the truth out.
Excuse me.
Could I comment about what I said? It's the appearance, that we don't want the appearance. You know, the appearance is always what people run with rumor. And that's what it's all about, is just the appearance.
And we want to make sure that there is no appearance six months from now that we tried to cover something up or hid something.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So that's why it was brought up.
Thank you for calling us, and Rick and I very much appreciate the call. I think moving for the three of you as an election board to work together in November, and that's all.
Well, I wanted to know also, why wasn't it mentioned to Betsy before this meeting, public meeting? Why didn't you two, like, discuss it with her and not just hit it, hit her with it here?
First of all, when I found out about it was yesterday.
Yeah, so that's like 24 hours.
She was not here yesterday.
I've been here since 8:05 this morning, Alan. I've been here, I was here an hour before the meeting.
Well, you could call her on the phone, right? You have cell phones?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, you could call her on the phone, give her that kind of courtesy?
Or she could call me and say, hey, what happened today, or something like that, too.
Well, you had an issue. You had like, you had some kind of.
Those were both.
Well, you had an issue, so do you have a reason why you didn't tell her and call her on the phone? Do you have?
Well, again, I don't want the appearance to be that I'm trying to cover something up, meeting with her and discussing an issue that should have been brought to the light and so that people understand what happened. Now, I, Commissioner Arnold has said that, you know, she just came in and signed the books, and I believe that's what she did. But we have to make sure that people understand that there's an appearance there and that we're not trying to hide anything, or we're trying to do something behind closed doors.
Well, you could do both, you know, you could talk to her and then talk publicly if you want. You could do both. That might be.
Again, you can twist it any way you want.
It could be kinder, you know?
Well.
Instead of hitting somebody, you know, with something like that, it's kind of shocking to the body and.
I know where you're coming from.
Well, we have to move forward, and thank you, Alan, Betsy, and Mary Ann for being on the election board. I think it is move forward, and, I mean, I'll bring up this, I have another issue, but I'll bring up it soon.
I get motion to adjourn.
I should go down.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn.